Hey, it's seven o'clock. So we're going to call the meeting to order. This is the Planning Board, Local Planning Board, February 11th, 2020 meeting. Let me introduce the Planning Board members. We have a couple of people not here tonight, but we do have a quorum. So at the right end of the table, John Thurston. Next to John, Mike Potter. And to my left, Peter Bridgman, Susan Rappelier, and Matt Sullivan, who is the Planning Director. We have two public hearings tonight, and then some other items. And after the two public hearings, it's the opportunity for public comment. So let me read into the record the first public hearing. This is case 2020-04, special use permit with Sonia Kimler Brown Road, tax map 19-8, construction in the wetlands, buffer zone. So the applicant will make a presentation and answer any questions that we might have. And then if there is any additional information, he'll make us aware of it. We then need to determine if the application is complete. If it is, we'll make a motion to accept the application as complete and open the public hearing for the item. And then any member of the public that wants to comment on the application will have an opportunity to do so. And then we will close the public hearing and hopefully deliberate on the application. So you're up.
Yes, I'm back. Here Cooper Dog, First Home Associates, representing Sonia Kinzelmeier and her property on Brown Road. It's a vacant lot currently has a two fingers of wetland that meet in the western, southwestern corner of the property. There is a building envelope in which the proposed building is entirely within. The impact is for the driveway to access the building site. There is no location on the property to build a building that does not impact wetlands. The proposal is to come in on the eastern side. I don't know if you're trying to see this, this here, but the driveway is coming in on the eastern side of the lot. A 12-foot driveway with fill slopes and about 20-foot wide impact across, crossing two wetland areas, very narrow, 325 square feet of impact with buffer zone associated with it, which would be totally 2,900 square feet. And I saw that's no different, differentiated between permanent and temporary. That 2,900 square feet indicates the amount of impact that's going to occur, both temporary and permanent. I didn't distinguish between the two. It's the area that's repeated. The area is going to have a retaining wall around a turnaround area associated with the garage. And there's some impact at the base of that. There is a temporary impact on the slopes to the driveway to, I don't know, long conceded. And so is that permanent or temporary? The grade will be changed. It'll end up being grass. It won't be impervious. So we get into that. So I've included all of the impact as 2,900 square feet, both temporary and permanent. With that, this is, this wetland is forested. It's a forested wetland, similar to the surrounding upland area to it. There is no standing water in it. There is storm event runoff perhaps in that wetland area very occasionally, but nothing permanent. There's no channelization in those two areas. It's proposed to have 18-inch by 25-foot culverts placed at grade in that. There is a wetland bureau permit for this, for these crossings. And there is approval for a septic system, which meets all state requirements on that, on your, on all your impact. The only, only function, this is, this is a very small watershed. It's enclosed by the roads. Heritage to the north, Beech Pond Road. To the east, the whole watershed is contained within that area of like maybe 10 to 20 acres at most. There isn't a whole lot of functions this, this wetland is actually doing. The biggest thing would be sediment trapping that would, that could happen if sediment got into it. The intent is that sediment won't get into it because of the erosion control devices that are going to be placed around any of the impact area of keeping anything from happening. Once the, the site is stabilized, they will, they will be removed.
Okay, the Conservation Commission reviewed this and said they have no objections to the project design in that they agree that the project as proposed has less environmental impact than the alternative design that was provided. Do you want to?
Oh, yes. I did provide, as you require, an alternative design, which comes in on the western side, which has a greater amount of wetland impacts, about 700 square, 50 square feet of wetland impact, less buffer zone impact, but there's actually more impact that's out of the right way to cross to that whole area. There's wetland there where, opposed to where this crossing is. It's outside of the drainage ditch at the road. It's, there's an upland berm there. So, you know, with onsite and offsite impact, this, this is a lesser alternative. Also, it's on the higher side of the lot, so you're going to have to bring less fill land to build a good road so that it's a better location.
You also mentioned in one of the write-ups that you were keeping the driveway 20 feet from the property line?
Yeah, that's a state requirement.
Okay, it's a state, well, I guess my question is, Matt, what is?
We do not have a driveway setback, although there are, I would say contradicting statements in some sections of the zoning ordinance for residential driveways. We have never enacted a setback requirement, from what I've seen.
Okay.
It's a state requirement. The wetland impact has to stay with 20 feet from the property line, at least until the rules just change.
It's not a local restriction.
Okay, all right. So, okay, thank you.
We had the parking area conversation before about keeping parking areas on the setback, but the driveway is not subject to locals.
Okay, but it is a state requirement.
It's a state requirement for wetland impact.
All right, thank you.
Do you have any records of large mammal migrations across that property? You mentioned that in your write-up. I was just curious what they might have been.
Well, I actually, I actually had an interesting encounter with a deer on this property.
Is that why it's that large?
Yeah, it's a large mammal. Yes, yes. It was very sweet, actually. And if that deer came up to me, I petted it, and I had an interesting conversation with this deer. It was quite, quite remarkable. I was like, wow, you know, for about half an hour, I'm there petting this little deer.
It's a magical piece of property.
Yeah, yes, yes. But, yeah, so there are large mammals that go, deer go through there, yeah, yeah. I haven't seen anything else, but that is memorable, to say the least.
No cougars.
I was hoping.
No cougars, no, sorry, you know, no mastodons or mammals, whatever they have.
And whereas alternative locations, really, the stream seems to run in the front of the property, so that's the only way we can get into the property.
Right, there is no other way to get into this.
And the house itself has, has no impact.
The house itself has no impact. The property has been surveyed. Ted Wright surveyed the property, so he'll be stamping the plan. I have got a copy of it. It just didn't print very well. It is stamped, I'll have to know.
Okay, good. Questions, folks?
None for me. I didn't see any alternative location either, so I think this is good.
I just have one question, actually. I just noticed. Peter, you shut the drip edge under the, the house edge against the driveway. Are you actually going to put drip edge in that location?
There's, there's, yes, there's a, there's a pit, there's going to be a gap.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to make sure what's going to be, okay. And then the other thing I just want to note, which is sort of interesting with this application, one of the, the buffer zone impacts is within the public right-of-way outside of the private property here for the culvert that's proposed. I, in my opinion, that's being approved as part of this application, although it is in the public right-of-way, meaning that I don't feel that the Public Works Department would have to come back and get that culvert re-approved through the process simply because it's off the property, if that makes sense. And quite honestly, I think we've seen this on other projects, and I haven't really explained it before, but I just noticed it here, and I wanted to make that clear.
Okay.
Can I make this clear?
Yeah, and the, also the Conservation Commission said they appreciated the attention to the impervious surface area that will result from the project and the addition of drip line trenches to address them, so. I don't know if you've seen these.
No, I haven't.
Okay. All right, anything else, Lee, right now?
No, Bill, were any questions that may, that may come up at times?
Okay, well, it appears that the application, the application is complete, so. Okay, thank you. Motion has been made to accept the application as complete. Somebody want to second that?
Second.
Motion has been seconded. On favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, I'll open the public hearing, and I don't speak to any public air, speak to the issues. So, Matt, do you have some conditions for us to consider?
Yeah, just standard conditions, condition one, incorporation of the plan set. I just want to add one small amendment to condition one. If we could just add the addition of the driveway width to the plan, it wasn't actually on the plan, I wanted to have that added in. So the plan is amended to date its approval, including the driveway width.
Okay.
Condition two, documentation submitted package is incorporated to the approval, obviously. The application shall comply with pre-construction siltation and erosion control measures. Condition four, final large format copies shall be provided, including a CWS and PE or licensed land surveyor stamp to the planning department. Inspection by a town should be required of the siltation devices prior to construction. Payment of all recording fees for the notice of decision. And lastly, there is a requirement for the wetlands boundary monumentation under 175 9.1, wetlands boundary monumentation, with all four requirements needing to be met. Conditions one through seven.
Okay, and what members, do you have any additional conditions? Okay, then if somebody is interested in making a motion to, well, have a closed public hearing, considering a matter of public care, and if someone wants to make a motion to approve this application and address the criteria, and we have some conditions.
I'd be happy to make that, make that motion. Planning Board approved case number 2020-04, tax map 019-008, for special use permit with the seven conditions outlined by the planner.
Excuse me, I have a point of interest.
Okay.
Did you say 25-foot culvert? It says in the project, it says 218-inch.
18-inch by 25-foot.
The, so they're eight, two, the two on the property are 18-inch by 25-foot.
Yeah.
John, sorry, let me, miss, sorry, did we miss something on that?
I didn't know if you wanted to get that in there on the conditions of 25 feet, is that what you?
Uh, no, that, that, it was actually just the, the payment width itself is what I was looking for. I wanted to know, once we go out there and look at it, how wide should the driveway actually be when we look at it?
Okay.
So that's kind of what I was getting at.
Yeah.
So maybe, I, I'm not sure if it's planned to be an eight, is it planned to be a 19-foot or a 20-foot driveway? Do you know, Peter?
Just a 12, 12-foot driveway.
12-foot, sorry, 12-foot driveway. Okay.
But you said a 25-foot culvert.
No, with, with fill slopes coming up.
Okay, okay, yeah. So we just add that to mention to the plan.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, so you're all set.
I'm sorry about that.
Okay, motion's been made. Would you second that?
I did.
Thank you. Okay, motion's been made and seconded. On favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Okay, next item, public hearing, case 2020-05, two-lot subdivision. This is for the Local Bible Fellowship, 533 Center Street, tax map 148-15. The applicant has requested that this be continued until March 3rd, and that will be at 7:00 at the Great Hall. So we need a motion for that. Somebody would be willing to make a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. On favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, so we'll see that one along with someone else?
Uh, one other application.
Oh, just one?
Just one other application, that apparently, a subdivision.
Oh, no.
And the hospital. I did not see the hospital come in today, but I'll have to check on that.
Oh, okay.
So let me check on that, Kathy.
Okay.
We're low on staff in the office right now, so we'll confirm.
All right, very good. Okay, next item on the agenda is the opportunity for public comment. So if you had some issues you wanted to bring to the attention of the Planning Board, then it would be the time to do that. Please come on up here.
My name is Dave Grillet, new on Port Whitelands Road, and I'm curious if there's been an announcement on the new members of the short-term rental planning committee, subcommittee.
We have to address that.
Okay. The membership has been announced to the committee. It's a seven-person committee, including three members of the board, John Thurston, Susan Rappelier, and Kathy Barnard. Additionally, the two public members are Peter Cook and Jordy Hutchinson. Chamber of Commerce representative is Cindy Melanson, and the Board of Selectment representative is Paul O'Brien. And that will be a seven-person committee. The first committee meeting, we believe, actually, I can confirm, is scheduled for the 24th, February 24th, 8:30 a.m., which is a Monday morning, at the planning conference room, which I'm going to be sent down, a notice about that tonight. And then subsequently, will be decided the next meeting dates after that, but there will be a public comment portion of that meeting, as there is any public meeting. And the notices will be posted on the planning department or planning board website, so that the folks are aware of that. Additionally, one of the first agenda items that the board, sorry, the committee will take on is how they want to structure public input and comment, whether they'll be doing some other public outreach program, if at all, and that will be something that the committee will discuss, whether it be forums, or surveys, or something of the like. That's one of the things that I'm hopeful the committee will discuss at that first meeting.
And we're thinking that we'd like to be, uh, in terms of three weeks, I think we've decided.
Yeah, yeah. Appreciate that, Matt. So can you talk about the balance of the committee in terms of background? Obviously, I'm concerned about any potential bias in terms of members of the committee. Do they have any self-interest in terms of owning short-term rental? Or if they're a real estate agent, they're responsible for advertising short-term rentals?
I'm going to give you a very political answer to that question, and that would be that I believe the board made its selection based on the membership constitution of the committee, not necessarily on the biases or lack thereof of the members that were selected. I think one of the expectations of the board in putting together the committee and appointing the public members was that folks would have a somewhat open perspective entering the process, although we do know each of the folks involved have had some level of engagement with short-term rentals, and I think that's pretty clear. But I think what we're trying to ensure that folks do have an open mind through the process, and we have a fact-based discussion rather than a motion-based discussion. So I'm hopeful that that's actually what we see. But I think that we're all aware that certainly some of the folks who are participating have an involvement on one side of the issue, and we do hope that balances itself out, but I guess we'll, that remains to be seen.
That was designed deliberately. The idea with the committee is that this board does not, nor does this town, have a good understanding whether or not there is a problem connected to short-term rentals or not. The only way to understand the issue is to hear from both sides of the issue. There are three planning board members. There are two members who are involved in the lodging and hospitality industry, along with a member of the Chamber of Commerce. It's a decent balance. The idea, I think, of the committee is fact-finding. It's not designed to write legislation. It's designed to find out what's going on.
What other towns and cities are doing around the state of the law, basically? Is the information gathered?
The committee itself doesn't really have any powers. Their, their assignment is to look at the issues and then report back to the planning board.
Right. So this is my final question, in terms of seeking public input. Is there going to be an announcement in the papers, or the public can attend and know about what's going on? For instance, the agenda for this wasn't readily published or easily found. We had to do a little bit of digging to find out about this potential topic being discussed. So is that going to be published in the paper, a short-term committee meeting, to enable everyone to know, to come out and provide commentary on the issue?
We have public notices that are posted, and they're posted on the town website and in the planning office.
Yeah, but I, I do want to be more direct, because I think, I just, we are, I'm not planning for this first meeting to do a story or anything of that sort in the newspaper, quite honestly. I think it's critical for the first few meetings of the committee to be working meetings, to get a sense of what the scope should be, and then open up the public conversation. I recognize there may be different approaches to that, and I fully appreciate that, but I don't, this is intended to be a task force that gets together and works on this issue, and I'm, you know, I want the public to be involved, but I also want to make sure that the committee knows what it's asking for when we do choose to involve the public, and that's something that I, I'm thinking of when considering the fact that we're not going to do that big public outreach campaign at this point in time.
At some point.
I would expect at some point, one of the things.
Well, that's the, an agenda item, and I would like to see that type of, that's going to be up to the, you know.
Okay.
Yeah, in fairness.
I'm sorry.
No, I would assume that that, knowing the committee members, that they would want to hear, want to do.
Oh, yeah. And in fairness, the discussion of short-term rentals was not on tonight's agenda, which is why you couldn't find it possibly. So if it were, it would have shown up on our agenda, which is on the website.
Okay. Fair enough. Thanks.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, on to the action items. First one is the voluntary merger of Pamela Clifford, tax map and lots 234-007 and 234-007-001. And this was continued from our previous meeting. And Matt, you did send us some information. Do you want to speak to that?
Sure, and I'm just going to read a portion of it for the record, just because I think it might be helpful. I, I obviously did receive some feedback after the last meeting from several board members, and then subsequently reached out to council to have a discussion about two matters, really. And the first being whether or not council felt that this was increasing nonconformity on the proposed lot. And secondly, whether or not the board could issue a conditional approval, should the board decide that it was a non, a more, an increase in nonconformity, and want to create some sort of condition for structural removal or something comparable to that. In reviewing the statute with council, the opinion was that, on the, on the second matter, I guess first, that a conditional approval could not be issued by the board. Instead, the board can only endorse or deny an application for voluntary merger. It's not traditional land use application, therefore a conditional approval is not appropriate. And then further, on the first point that I mentioned, council did feel that the addition of a structure, despite the density decrease argument that I had made at the prior meeting, which I believed, the addition of accessory structure, in her opinion, was though an increase in the nonconformity on the proposed lot. So I wanted to make that clear to the board as well. As a result, the board has some options tonight as to what it would like to do. You can see I've recommended one of maybe multiple options, and my recommendation is that the board deny without prejudice. I'm not sure that even a denial with prejudice would restrict the person from submitting the merger again in the future, but I think it's always safer to go with, without prejudice. And I would ask that the board, if you do choose to go the denial route, make the denial clear to the applicant that the denial is on the basis of the increase in the nonconformity of the accessory structures, so they can address that, choose to, you know, remove a structure if that's what they'd like to do, and then come back to the board with a new submission. I wouldn't want to restrict their ability to do that. I don't want to jump in front of a conversation that Mike and I had, but another option is to simply request the applicant to withdraw the application. I did not have a chance to speak to the applicant prior to the meeting this evening, but time is not of the essence here. So if you prefer to simply have me reach out to them and ask that they withdraw, and I can consult with them about what would need to be done to have this approved, I can gladly do that as well, whatever the board's preference is.
And we don't have any clock ticking as to when this needs to be done?
No, you don't. The only, you know, change that could happen is a mortgage or change of ownership. That would be the one issue, but I don't feel there's any clock on the merger application as it's been submitted.
There's no clock on the merger application as far as this board is considered, but we do not know what the applicant's clock might be.
Sure.
The applicant may be struggling to pay taxes on these two lots, and feels it might be a break by urging the two lots. We don't really know. And in fairness to the applicant, I really think we need to think about this a little bit further. I spent some time in the cellar at town hall, going through the files. I went through the codes officers' files and planning board files and the ZBA files. There's nothing in the ZBA files. There is some information in the code enforcement officers' files, there's a little bit in the planning board files. This piece of property is the Dotier Homestead. It's the building on the main lot, the bigger lot, is dated 1830. It's a farmhouse. This whole property, part of the Dotier Farm, Homestead, was subdivided in 1982 to create these two lots. Prior to 1982, these two lots were all part of the same large farm. The 1982 plot that shows the subdivision shows the shed on the 7-1 lot in existence in '82. It's been there a long time. Ruth Dotier died in '89. She was born in '24. She lived all her life on this farmstead. They ran a horse farm from '63 to '67 on this lot, the Hombreley Farm, where they did horse riding exercises. The point is that these two lots have been treated as one since '82. They were one prior to '82. They are a farm. Rob Hausman calls it a farm use in correspondence in the planning board files. We have a definition in our, in our regulations, which is titled farm buildings existing. These are existing farm buildings. That shed is an existing farm building. These people want to join the two lots, which is basically to.
Rejoin.
Rejoin the two lots, basically to recreate an old farm. To deny the application is to rest on the nicety of the ordinances, density, and to ignore the historical use of the land and the historical existence of a farm which may have been here since the early years of the 19th century, and only was broken up over a century and a half subsequent to that, seems to me to be unfair to the applicant. I don't know how to argue this and overcome council's concerns that it's increasing the density and increasing the nonconformity, but it appears to me that this property was at one time a farm. It was broken up on a subdivision. It now wants to be rejoined. It seems to me like we're making it whole by allowing the voluntary lot merger, and by denying the voluntary lot merger, we're restricting its rejoining. And it seems to me to be outside of historical precedent. I just don't see what the town gains. I also don't see how this board can allow it if it's really an illegality. So I think.
Yeah, I guess.
We're rocking hard, bless you. Sorry.
No, no, I thought you were done. The nicety of the regulations, I guess I have a hard time with that, because the regulations are what we're supposed to be paying attention to.
Understood.
And so I guess I don't consider the nicety. Sometimes they may seem overly harsh and silly or whatever, but they're there, and that's what we're supposed to uphold, so that's kind of where I'm coming.
But there are, there are basically two lots. The eastern lot has lots of little buildings on it, and the western lot, which is, has one building on it. And so if you end up looking at the eastern lot and the number of structures per acre there, and you now end up adding. there and you now end up adding the other lot, you're actually decreasing the number of structures per acre by joining these two lots.
That's the argument I made, but council did not support my argument.
Okay, but, and I think I mentioned this at the last meeting, that it's up to the commission, the planning board members, to make that determination to how they read and enforce our regulations. So if the planning board makes that determination, the majority of the members, I mean, that's-
And just so everybody knows-
It is before us in that way and I respect the opinion of the town council, of our council in that same, I don't-
Yeah, and the ordinance reads that the accessory structure limitations are two per lot plus an additional structure for each eighty thousand square feet you have above the minimum required lot size. So it's interesting, it's a, every lot has a right and then you also have a density right that goes along with it. So it's a little tricky to apply that here. That's my opinion.
Well, no, and I happen to agree because I did that calculation and felt that it didn't meet. So anyway, as long as you know where I'm coming from.
And we had a pre-existing farm-
Yes.
With more buildings on the one lot than would have been permitted had it come before us to ask for permission to become a lot with these number of buildings. We would have rejected it, all of which were at one time part of a farm, which became subdivided in eighty-two and now they want to break up the subdivision and go back to as much of recreation of the farm as they wanted to. Our regulations, with density regulations, applied strictly everywhere, would basically rule out almost every farm that we have around here except maybe in the ag district. Certainly in the general residential district, any of the surviving farms with more than buildings, allowed buildings on a lot, even if they're working farms, and this is a working farm, would be denied. It seems to me that-
Well, then probably we should be looking at the changing the regulation.
I think we need to change the regulation long-term to allow these sorts of pre-existing lots to have the flexibility to increase in size by incorporating other parts of, incorporating lots that had been at one time part of the original farm with farm buildings, which would increase density by incorporation, exactly as we have in a case like this.
So you're getting a farm-specific?
Something to do with that. I mean, it's clear to me that this is a case of a use which has been around for a long time and then along comes the planning board back in its day and imposes a regulation on density and all of a sudden, this guy can't do what he would ordinarily have done had he not done a subdivision back in eighty-two.
And I understand where you're coming from, but my concern is if somebody, if the property sells and the new property owner wants to do something other than farming, the town cannot, in my opinion, step in and say, you can't use those buildings for storage of-
Then you limit it under your agricultural ordinance to a working farm or something similar, a gentleman's farm, a working farm.
There are lots of property owners that have nonconformities because of changes in Arizona's regulations.
Yes, I think we have to look at this application without knowing that there's an owner or there's a farm here because we have many other instances out there that we need to look at the same way, as a blank slate, not knowing the owner or the farm or what's going on there. We have to, we have to follow what the people voted on years ago. There were plenty other people that had things voted against them that aren't allowed to do things that they once were able to do. And if we set a precedent by giving somebody not going by the legal counsel and recognizing that the will of the voters set us into position to follow the rules, then we're going down a road where other people are going to come in and things aren't going to be pretty.
Then the only recourse we leave owners of lots like that, where they find themselves encumbered by modern regulations, an old use encumbered by modern regulations as a zoning board adjustment to apply for a variance, and that is a very tricky proposition.
You could simply modify, and this would be a solution, but there's this second piece to the accessory structure definition that says, provides certain exemptions to swimming pools, tennis courts, wellhouses, doghouses. You could add an exemption for agricultural outbuildings or something to that effect and exempt them from accessory structure. I'm just saying that would be a solution if you wanted to go down that road.
But we can't now.
No, we can't, and maybe we should, but if you wanted to do it, that would probably be the right way rather than having a specific, wow, I gotta think about that again.
This is the first time I can remember being on this board for a short time, nonetheless, I can remember where I've come across a voluntary lot merger stopped by what in my mind is a technicality preventing the resurrection of an old use.
But we always say when we do these mergers that it's created no new nonconformity, no-
Right, that's what we were doing before.
Sorry, I may be a hard time talking folks without my teeth. No new nonconformity or any violation and it comes more into conformity with the regulations.
But we are not creating any more nonconformity because the nonconformity exists. And I don't understand why enlarging the lot to twice its size isn't making this thing more in conformity with our regulations. And I believe that this ends up being something which, in many of the lot mergers that we do, there's the statement that now you have, and I think that one of the lot mergers we have are two lots which are less than a total of one acre, and the comment is that this is less non-conforming than it was before and so therefore this should be approved. And here we end up having something where the number of buildings per acre is going to be decreased by this, so therefore, to my way of thinking, it is less non-conforming than it was before.
But the alternative interpretation is that the, is a non-density interpretation that says that you're only allowed to have three accessory structures on this property. You have four already, so you're in violation and you're going to add a fifth, so you're actually increasing-
But, but a small lot doesn't have a primary structure.
Right, and that's why I wrote my first review, that that was a good thing to actually add a primary structure in.
So you're incorporating a shed into the primary structure.
Right, so you almost have to say, which, it's tricky because you are addressing one of the nonconformities and you're not the other and, but I don't know that, I don't know that you can make a nonconformity worse through the merger process, even so.
Well, you're making the nonconformity on one of the two lots much better by associating the building-
Right.
-with a primary structure.
Right. Satisfying one section of the regulations and not the other.
So you're basically bringing it in more closely to conformity by merging these two lots, aren't you?
You know, I just, yeah, I just had an idea. I wonder why this couldn't be done on a reconfiguration of non-conforming lots, which allows the planning board to waive. I'll give that some more thought.
But reconfiguring?
You can dissolve lots through a reconfiguration process and reconfiguration of non-conforming lots gives the planning board-
But that requires an application.
It does, no, I'm just thinking, if this is really an issue, I think you could use that process because the board has more flexibility in that review process than it does in the merger process almost because it gives you a, it's a safety valve from the zoning. But anyway, that's not what's in front of you, so I won't help you.
Well, that just means that the applicant fills a new application for a reconfiguration of two non-conforming lots. Would that be the case?
I think so, but I-
I mean, at this point, the applicant stands to lose because this board is not going to approve this, I don't think, in the face of council's objection.
How much would you think of the reconfiguration? It's technically a boundary line adjustment, so it does require a butter notification and it's, so it's a balance of-
And it's costly.
The other alternative approach I want to, regardless of whether you ask them to withdraw or you deny it, they could choose one of the accessory structures that they want to remove, in my opinion. They may not necessarily need to remove a larger accessory structure. That was one thought that I had. If they have a small, doghouse-style structure, I see no issue with them removing that rather than removing the garage.
So how many, how many of the structures are permitted and legal?
They're all non-conforming with their grandfather because they're there.
Yeah, John, I think I mean-
So moving forward here, okay, if they take one away-
Yeah.
-and then they get the merger done, then they could conceivably resurrect the old shed?
Nope, they would lose their rights to, they'd lose their rights to whatever one they choose to remove, no question about it.
This property has history with accessory structures. They have been under order from the town to raise a whole series of structures and to drag off a whole bunch of old rusty automobiles and carcasses and things off the lot. So they've already been told they've gone down that route, raised structure, it's going to be kind of hard to ask them to raise another one to bring them into technical conformity with a regulation which post-dates their use.
Right, one of the, your idea might be a good one, table this, have a conversation.
Yeah, and I intended to do that before tonight, but just-
This one does look kind of small, it looks smaller than the others, that's, I mean, we don't really know anything about the condition unless somebody has been-
Well, I can say this, that they all appear on a nineteen eighty-two dated plot, every one of those structures.
Right.
So they've been there since eighty-two and unless they're just sheds that people avoid and they walk around the property, they're in use. And you've driven by, I mean, you've seen them, it's a horse farm.
Yeah, right. Okay, well-
It's your pleasure on this.
I would ask if the planner would not mind calling in the Quifffords-
That's fine.
-having a conversation with them and see what it is that they want to accomplish and see if there's a way we can help them do that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And just table this.
And table it, yeah. What worries me about applications, an application like this, is that we have, we have a relic of old-time Wolfboro here, which our modern regulations are stopping from achieving their purpose, doing what they want to do. And I don't want to, I would hate to see our regulations have a chilling effect on the old ways in town. I'd like to encourage the old ways as much as possible, as far as they're practical, of course, because so much of modern Wolfboro is turning its back on its old past. I'd just like to see it encouraged.
Is anybody okay if we, if we table this, is that okay?
Sure.
Okay, so we'll table it until March third?
Yeah.
Is that okay?
That's okay. Option.
Yes.
Seconded.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded to table the Pam Clifford voluntary merger until March third. If you're in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, board.
And, okay, the next voluntary merger, Lewis Family Trust of two thousand sixteen, tax map and lots two four four dash zero zero seven and two four four dash zero zero eight.
So the applicant has requested merger of two lots, one occupied by a primary structure and one being vacant, separated by a stone wall that you see in the picture here. This is a much easier merger application in many ways in that it does address some nonconformities. It brings the parcels into full conformity with the zoning ordinance, particularly based on the acreage. Of course, it's not a survey acreage, but it does appear to bring it to full conformity with that. And also addresses a setback encroachment issue with the, I'm sorry, I made an error there. Parcel eight is occupied by a garage structure, I should have commented on that, I'm sorry there. But it brings it to conformity and it now has a primary structure and it also addresses the setback encroachment issues that are addressed today on both lot eight, sorry, lot seven and potentially lot eight as well with the garage structure. So I would recommend that the board approve this merger.
Okay, that one is pretty squared cut.
It is.
Yeah, there was a one-family house and a shed on lot eight which was raised prior to this application. The course of Scott Road is kind of weird, isn't it?
Sure is.
Is this subdivision-
Don't ask questions, Mike.
Okay, thank you.
Well, no, what is your question because it almost is like a long driveway.
Yeah, Scott Road's a private road, yeah.
We see this everywhere.
But what, does the road predate the subdivision or vice versa?
I actually don't know, I suppose, but-
Looks like the subdivision was overlaid on the road.
That is what happened, yes.
All right. I'd be happy to move that we approve this merger.
Okay.
Second.
Has been seconded to approve sixteen Scott Road lot merger. If you're in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
It's worse when we have a right-of-way actually shown and the road goes way outside of the right-of-way. That's a more concerning issue, but anyway.
Okay, and then the next voluntary merger, Lewis Family Trust of two thousand sixteen, tax map and lots two four four dash zero zero nine and two four four dash zero one zero.
This is an even easier merger. This is a merger of two vacant lots that will bring the lots into conformity with road frontage, but not the minimum lot size. However, there's no increase in nonconformity as a result of this merger and therefore I'd recommend that you approve it.
Okay, so road frontage is okay and what area is coming toward?
Coming closer, but not into full conformity.
Okay, all right.
I know there was, there was a camp on lot ten which it raised in-
Yeah.
-two thousand and three and there is a right-of-way and a right-of-ingress and egress, which I assume doesn't get extinguished by this lot merger.
Correct, it would remain.
Yeah, move to approve.
Motion has been made and seconded. Seconded. If you're in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that was a merger of the second, Lewis Family Trust.
You talk about road frontage, this is road inclusion. Yeah, yeah, it's a bit on these private roads, but yeah, it is road inclusion, not necessarily frontage, but it's-
I think the family at the end of the road upon the lake is part of this family many moons ago.
So you think they're all of one ownership a long time ago?
Scott Road was a family of the Scott family, yes.
Yes.
So that was their road, that was their road. It goes all the way down to the lake and there's an old big house down there.
Right. And the Scott house is next to the pavilion-
Right.
-to the cook's, not the, yeah, mobile house. It's more of a family. Okay, on to communications and miscellaneous, and we have the DOT, the letter of response. We talked about this at the last meeting.
Why was the dressy redacted?
Yes, right, yeah, I was wondering.
Were you trying to hide it?
Do you want to know the truth? I don't like paper a lot, so I tend to throw things away and that usually is fine in ninety-nine point nine 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 percent of instances, except when you throw away the planning board's letter that was sent to them and you have to use the police department's letter that was sent to them. So that's the truth.
Okay.
Sorry. Yeah, no, usually it's fine, but in this one, it does say Dean Rondo under there, so I did review a letter to make sure there was no specific content, but luckily they sent the same letter to everybody, so.
So it had nothing to do with Ukraine Gate or Russia Gate or-
Even if it did, I wouldn't tell you, so.
Well, we were going to, you sent this on to the Heritage Commission?
I did send it on to the Heritage Commission. They're going to take a look, because you had recommended that, they're going to take a look tomorrow evening at the, at three questions I had identified for them, primarily items, three, four, and ten. And the board had, you know, I had sort of painted a picture that this is a bit redundant in the sense that we have an active project advisory committee for this, but the board had indicated at the last meeting that you may be interested in providing some feedback to this. I don't think it's, you know, you're obligated to do that, but it might be something you want to do and you can certainly take more time. As I mentioned at the last meeting, DOT is telling me that this was sent a little prematurely to the town, so we have some time. So, we have some time, but environmental, I guess, was not talking to the project team. So, it's really up to you what you'd like to do with this.
Did you talk to the Conservation Commission?
They received a copy of this letter.
Because there is in fact a small town-owned park down there near Weston Autobody.
Yes.
Right.
Okay.
And we are, the reason I say it's redundant is because we are going through the whole corridor as part of the project design phase, so we're talking about the wetlands. The bigger issue here that might be worth commenting on is the fact that the project had been cut. And, you know, there's not necessarily anything you can do about the funding, but some of the environmental issues that we had hoped would be addressed, including Russ Pond, the Skelly property that John's familiar with. There, we're beginning to be concerned that those are not gonna be addressed at all as part of the actual twenty twenty-four project. So, if you'd like to say something to that effect, that might be appropriate, because I'm not sure if those environmental issues will be addressed. That's very concerning. Where is the Skelly property?
Yeah.
Um, it's on the.
Next to Morris's, Scott Forge. From that's approved.
Yes, sure.
There's a.
Yeah, on that.
There's a.
Northern side.
There's, on the right-hand side, before you get to the Warren Pickles old house, there's a stone wall, and then there's a huge culvert that goes under the road, and that goes towards Lake Crescent Lake. And the ditch is probably about twelve feet across and about four feet to five feet deep, and it just scoured bottom, and it's all getting ripped down and carried right into Crescent Lake, because the, the, the volume and ferocity of water coming down the side of the road all ends up in this one area. And the worst part about it is all the sand and salt end up carried at the same time when, when you get rapid water flow and, and high-level storms.
Yeah, we, we had worked out a solution to potentially do a gravel wetland at the area between the practice screen and the golf course up above, but we had some issues there. The project's not dead, but we had hoped that DOT would sort of step in and help us with some of the negotiations, and I'm just not sure that, just not sure that's gonna happen. But I guess, I guess what I'm leaning towards is if you'd like to write a general letter or have me draft something for you to review, I'd be happy to do that. The environmental part is the part that I'm concerned about. Whether we get it funded through the DOT project or through maybe some other funding mechanism, it'd be nice to see that a lot of that work done, but.
So, is there grant potential there again, or is it, I thought we were hanging a hat on that for a while.
Yeah.
I thought, so, yeah, I mean, I, I know a little bit about the project, because it was when I first got here. I, I worry that our grant funding may be not possible, because we've already received grant funding for it. That's my primary concern. I think what we'd like to try and do is open up conversations with the golf course again, maybe. But I don't know if that's gonna happen.
Have you talked to one with Partnership Association about it? Because they, in fact, are worried about what happens in Crescent Lake.
They, I have, but we're actively working on other implementation grants, and we don't, quite honestly, I'm not sure we have the capacity to take on more grants. That's one of the other challenges. Quite honestly, they're kind of a difficult thing to administer. And that's, again, why we hoped that DOT might be doing some of this mitigation as part of their project. And quite honestly, they had sent us a letter six months ago asking for mitigation projects, and I sent them a lengthy response. And the response we've gotten back is we just can't afford what you're asking for. And I understand that, but I mean, because they are really constrained, and, and I don't think, they don't have the ability to just find money, but I think if we could keep pushing on it, then.
I'd like to see you write a letter.
Right.
Write a letter of concern, write it by us, and let us, let us look through.
Well, the.
Ask comments if we have any.
Yeah. John, do you have any other suggestions? Because we should mention these waterfalls.
Well, what, what's?
And a Skelly property, and if you had some others, you should include those, I think.
Well, the, the thought process there is, you know, from the golf course, it all runs down over the hill towards Lake One of Psaki, okay?
Yep.
All the water that comes down the side of the road is self-inflicted road water from, in my mind.
Open drainage and even some closed drainage, it's not.
But it's, but we, but that's all from the roadside, and, and all from the high school down, basically. In my mind, I don't know why we don't focus our efforts and condense the area and say, let's fix the water problem first, because what's, what's, what's more at stake? Is it the road that's the problem, or is it the water and the long-term effects that are more the problem?
I think that's.
I mean, it's been going on for a long time, and again, I can tell you, if you kayak down there at the end of, of the property off Pine Street, where the Huggins Hospital property is, the, the bottom is all black, like oily, and it's a, it's a very nasty residual that's being left in that coal down there.
That, that happens to be typical of the entire bottom of Lake Wentworth and is associated with algae that goes down. It's not that only in that area.
Yeah, well, the, the water flow is something that the town can do something about, because clearly we're responsible for making it happen in the first place.
Yeah, I'm just saying.
Some extent.
It all, it all, it all relatively ends up in that coal.
I'm agreeing, yeah, I'm agreeing.
So, I would, I would, so I would talk about environmental, and I would, I, I, if you wanna get your permission to talk about traffic calming and safety along the corridor, if that's okay, I mean, that's one of the major things we're working on.
Right, don't forget my sugar maple's along.
Well, that's one I was just gonna bring up.
Yes, I do, I'm sorry.
I thought it was Peter, but it was you that brought that up.
Yeah, there's a, there's a series of them, I think I counted seven to twelve.
Right.
Send me a note about that.
The sugar, the sugar maple.
And where those are exactly.
The Old Hale property down to, down to Weston.
Yeah, from, from Weston Autobody.
Of course, you don't know where the Old Hale property is, do you?
You reminded me.
Would you like me to tell you?
He's a newcomer, yes, of course.
It's, it's the picnic table property.
Oh, okay, all right.
Uh, but, I mean, should we mention street trees?
Yeah, we should.
In general, because that, that was in the master plan.
Yep, street trees. Yep.
And, and John, if you, you think of other water quality issues, why don't you let Matt know?
Yeah, I'll just bring this back, I'll bring this back to you before we send it off. Again, it's not, time is not the essence on this one locally. Well, okay, street trees, anything else?
The traffic calming.
One of the, one of the things that I think about, again, I don't know if it's ever been brought up, but the, the high school with the traffic, are we, are we?
Yes.
Integrating that into our plans so that?
That is part of the plan.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we, we had a, a recommendation there, they just met with DOT last week, and they have another recommendation, but one of the recommendations is pretty simple, it's an elongated turn lane there, because there really isn't enough spin, and there is potential right-of-way width, and so we are looking at that, because that creates, well, it's almost good, because there's some, some relief, potentially, when people are stopping and letting people in. It's not safe, and it creates other issues, and the volume, and the, the volume just makes it.
From, from the, from dropping my son off every morning at the, at the school, the, the word is that the buses all have to come in, and then they can't unload anybody until after seven o'clock. So, they all stack in, they all stack in, they're around the horn, and then they back all the way up towards the junior high and towards the art center. And then cars trying to come in, the Brewster property right there, they, they get stuck, because there, there's no flow going in, so they're all sitting there in the road, because the buses are all stacked up by the junior high, and it's all backed up from the art center all the way up to South Main Street.
So, so, John, is this, is this internal to the site, because the, the, the transportation person for the school is actually on our committee, I could tell them about this.
Well, I mean, everybody knows about it.
But this is the buses specifically that are creating this issue?
Specifically are all, they get there in the morning, and they can't let their students out till after seven o'clock, so they're all sitting there with all their students on them, waiting for the, for the hand to click, and then they can let the people off. My, again, I don't, I never understood why they didn't take the first parking lot and drive all the way out around the high school with all the buses behind the woke center, and then, and then they're all out there, and then people can do their thing. It just, I didn't, never really thought that the school had a good traffic plan, yes.
No, it's a little dicey.
And it actually backs traffic up past the hospital.
Yeah, it does.
Going toward downtown, so.
It's a, it's a, it's an extra fifteen minutes from the, from the Huggins Hospital to the high school, if you're waiting there.
Yeah, oh yes, right, yeah. Okay, so you're gonna bring something back, and if anyone has any other specific issues that we could include? Just, yeah, no?
Yeah, again, it's not like you're gonna get one chance to do this, as things come up, we have, for better or worse, forty years to talk about this, so.
So, again, the, the big picture of the big plan, are we, is there, is there some discussion, maybe, where we could cut this in half, or does it all have to go at once, or?
So, we're, we're gonna end up cutting the length more than half, because the priority, at least at this point, is on the section from the high school down, if not from the library end, because that's sort of the real gateway. The part that's not gonna be as upgraded, upgraded at all, is gonna be from the high school out to the Alton Town Line. And as you all know, driving that.
I sure hope they go as far as the high school, because that.
That's what we're gonna have to push for, but one of the things that may, may happen is we may come to the voters for potentially some extra funding on the project. I mean, that may be what happens to do things like street lighting or landscaping. We may end up having to come back to the taxpayers, which doesn't feel good.
No, true. But I, I don't think.
No, I know, but.
If you, if you presented the taxpayers with, this is our stormwater management to give us a better water quality, and we, that's what we're standing on, I think that would be more palatable than, than telling you you gotta pave the road.
Right, right, yeah, so that's, that's exactly it, John. We're not gonna say, well, if you wanna go to the high school, you wanna pave the road to the high school, you're gonna.
Drive in dirt first.
It's gonna be, if you want these, these nice lights, if you want this nice curved sidewalk, this is, then we'll put that to the voters, but you're right, we're not gonna say, if you wanna do a thousand more feet of pavement, you gotta vote for this million dollar, no.
Let's hope we all get sensible about this and draw our horns in a little bit. We don't wanna go to the voters asking for several million dollars for road repair.
Especially my estate.
I know.
I, I, I know, I know.
And everything else is coming down the pipe.
And that's, that's, I agree with you, but then, as long as everybody can lower their expectations about the project, then. And, and that's okay, we are gonna have an overlay this year, so there'll be a Band-Aid on it, but.
Well, they did a good job last fall on it, to get it to the point where it is right now, which is better than it's been eight years.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep, so it's, we'll see some, it'll, it'll feel good after this year, but I'm curious to see in twenty twenty-four how, how we feel about it then, but anyway.
Thanks.
Well, well, we've got an opportunity to put in our two cents.
That's right.
Okay.
I could put something in about the funding if you want me to.
Funding? No. If you're stepping on a landmine if you do it.
I'm just saying that we're disappointed by the fact that there's only, you know, X million dollars available for the project.
Sure that'd be.
Oh.
I wasn't saying supporting going to the voters, I was saying, if you wanna just make a general comment about being disappointed about.
Why aren't we getting more money?
Yeah, I think you gotta add that in. You don't, you really don't need to, it's not gonna help at all, you know?
Right, right, let's focus on, on the issues.
Thanks.
Okay, thanks, yeah. Uh, okay, the, we had those at the spring conference, signing conference, what's the date on that, it's June?
Yeah, it's, again, another Saturday in May, May thirtieth.
Yeah, May thirtieth.
So, you're welcome to sign up, it is a really good conference, if you are interested in, in attending, they have good sessions.
The agenda hasn't come out yet.
The agenda doesn't come out for some time here, so it's hard to interest. But last year, just remember, it did sell out very, very early, and registration closed, so if you're interested, just let me know, and I'll grab a few registrations now while they're still available, so just, just please let me know.
We have no idea what the agenda is.
They, you know, they'll do a legislative update, they'll do something environmental, they'll, they'll do something on housing, they'll do something on energy, but the sessions don't come out for some time. They're probably just now figuring out who they want to speak. I remember I spoke at one before I worked for the town, and I didn't know really until like a month and a half out that I was actually gonna be attending, so I think that's probably what everyone's doing right now. Registration is in April, so, yeah, right, so.
Okay, and the House bill, sixteen twenty-nine, that was basically just to alert people.
Yep.
Let's see, this is one that, just the pending ones that John McDonald had passed on to you, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yes, I would just encourage you to take a look through this. I am somewhat disappointed by the title of the, of the bill, but one piece of it certainly is relative to training procedures for zoning planning boards, but there's a lot more to unpack within here. I just encourage you to take a look through it, particularly read the bolded text, bolded italics, and also the deleted text, which you'll see starting more on page four and moving on.
This bill is in executive session, due out of committee March the fifth. It's got support of the governor, it's a bipartisan bill. Governor created a task force that crafted this bill. It is opposed by New Hampshire Municipal Association for a number of different reasons. The subcommittee that's hearing this bill seems to feel that mandatory training is not a good idea. And also seems to feel that requiring allowances for density made for elderly housing to be applied to all forms of housing in all zoning districts is also a bad idea. So, by the time it comes out of executive session, it won't look like what you're looking at now. It will probably be a little bit more favorable to local government, and it's gonna, it's, it's only in the House right now, it has yet to go through the Senate, if it gets that far at all. So, this is perhaps a little premature to be concerned about it, but it, it's requirements for education for planning boards and zoning boards, I think is a good idea, not just not the way it's been implemented here. Because there is no requirement that planning board or zoning board members be educated on what they're supposed to be doing.
Yeah, and the requirement, the requirement in here is very basic.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
And.
I mean, you can take a test yourself at home and tell them you passed.
Yeah, and, and, and the idea is just to make sure that people understand what the basic ideas of a planning board, zoning board are. It's really aimed towards communities that don't have any staff at all to attend meetings, that may not understand what things they can and cannot use as justification to approve and deny applications. So, that's really what the aim was, but, yeah, I, I think this, everybody recognizes this is not a perfect solution, but I, I would say that there's, there's been talk about the housing crisis for a long, long time. There's been talk about what municipalities can do to fix it, and this not being perfect, I think this is the first time that pen has been really been put to paper to make some policy changes around it, so I am at least happy about that.
Good, good that you're happy.
Yeah, thanks.
And I wasn't on the task force that wrote it, so.
That's good, too, because all they did was pass it around.
I'm glad nobody found that out, but I will tell you, might as well tell you now, so, it's well-intended.
Okay, uh, work session items, architectural and design standards, that's, we have, got the appearing scheduled next week.
Almost just in.
And, and the, this was in the paper, so have you had any phone calls or?
I certainly haven't, I certainly haven't, so.
And your phone hasn't been?
No, and, and I, I did share with Kathy, I, I haven't done a big public outreach campaign about this. I felt that the board has discussed this.
Well, we have had a public meeting.
Yeah, I just, I didn't do a story in the paper, I didn't do a, a big public notice beyond the required legal one. I felt that the board is really, and the committee has vetted this a lot, and that, you know, if folks want to attend and hear more about it or oppose it, they're welcome to do that, but I'm not gonna reach out to stakeholders directly, so I, I haven't done that, just so you're aware.
Hasn't been done in secret, so.
No, it hasn't been, no, no, it don't, and it's just sometimes something that I struggle with, do I reach out, does everybody know? But I, I haven't with this, so I just want you to know that.
It was in the two thousand seven master plan, and clearly stated in this latest master plan, so. And I, but I did reach out to Joyce Davis, because she was on the, I think she was chairman of the committee that came up with the original architectural guidelines, and they thought it had always been that they hoped that eventually this would end up in the site point in regulation. So, I thought that would be the, for us and not this for you.
I did provide a codified version, and, and for folks that have seen this a lot, particularly committee members, you'll notice I broke some of the statements up, so it looks a little bit different the way it's written down here. But I didn't change any of the text at all, I just put periods in some sentences, that sort of thing. Uh, but this is actually how it would actually be codified within that section one seventy-three nineteen, where the current voluntary design standards language exists, so I think it's prepared for adoption, should you choose to do that.
And, and then there will be some amendments we need to make to the zoning ordinance.
And I've already prepared those, I think I prepared those last. And I've already prepared those, I think I prepared those last year, actually, so I'll, I'll just give them to you, because there are a couple of sections that reference voluntary design guidelines that just need to be changed.
Okay.
Okay, and then there is one other item that we put on this agenda, it's the waiver, um, provision that we actually-
Held a public hearing.
Public hearing.
Collected all the public comment, and something happened, and a vote was not recorded. Uh, I don't think a vote was ever taken. So, the board noticed the public hearing, had the public hearing, but ultimately, there was no vote taken by the board. So, the site plan amendment was not actually adopted, and I've dug into this quite a bit.
You know, I kinda hold Mike responsible for that.
I agree.
Because, and he's right.
Because I'm right here, I know.
Well, there's a conversation about it, and then there's just no emotion.
I can't believe that we did not vote, but-
It's not a big deal, so it's just-
I'll just keep my mouth shut, you're telling me that.
No.
It's just going from the-
I think I'm saying the opposite.
Oh, I didn't say anything?
You're just saying up.
She was.
And the change is just to go from two-thirds that's in there right now to the simple, simple majority that's in the subdivision regulation, so we're just making the, the exact same. And we, we'd already talked about this in the G N eighteen, it just didn't happen, so, clean that up this way.
Okay, moving left on, uh, the master plan implementation memo. Uh, we had agreed at the last meeting that Matt and I were gonna sit down and come up with, um, some suggestions, and so we did. We sent them to you.
A couple of comments.
Okay.
Um, bullet point three. Open circle point three, deliver the arts and heritage chapter, insert the word chapter. And then not to the conservation commission presumably, or, or-
Well, you can do it, Max.
Sorry, that's, that's embarrassing.
And, and the one before that, we developing, delivering economic development to somebody other than the concom.
Yeah.
Just a cut and paste. Otherwise, it looked good.
Yeah.
Especially the, the fourth bullet point, that I think is really good.
Which one?
During delivery meetings, responsible parties will be asked to review and deliver a work plan for selected goals.
And, and that, that aligns with the fact that a lot of these committees are, are moving towards doing these work plans, and they, they want the master plan to give them some guidance. So, I think they'll actually not look at this as you shall do a work plan, they might say, okay, some of our work is actually done for us by this thing. I know certainly that's what the energy check, the energy folks think, and I'm hopeful that others feel the same way.
Yep.
And then I will develop some sort of report to you. Uh, one of the things I've gotta kind of tackle is the fact that, you may remember I did that. I did that exercise where I tried to consolidate certain recommendations down. I'm gonna have to consolidate recommendations that are kind of redundant, so that you can actually get a report that's not a hundred pages long. Every year that you get one, maybe it's more like ten pages, that you can actually, you know, understand and mean something to you. I've gotta figure out how to format that. I provided the Dover one only as an example, uh, because it is sort of an interesting one, and if you want me to just send you the link directly, I'm happy to do that.
No, I do that, but I didn't, I typed this in and-
Yeah, I can send the link directly to everyone, but it is sort of a nice example of how they report on the, on their master plan annually, and it, it's pretty helpful, I think, down there.
I'll be interested to see how the town manager handles the work plan for community facilities chapters, any recommendations?
Yes, but a lot of it is being-
Very specific recommendations in that chapter.
Yeah, but a lot of those things are being discussed, I, I think, for the most part. So, I, I think that none of them will come as a surprise, and that chapter has been pulled out, as you know, Mike, for a lot of the projects that we saw this year as part of the warrant. So, I think, I, I think one thing that this plan did really well is pulled in the department heads that are responsible. And it was both the community facilities chapter and the transportation and public infrastructure chapter that really did that, and energy. Uh, so I, I don't think that department heads are gonna have any, and the town manager's not gonna have any surprises when they get this document.
Oh, I don't think there'll be any surprises, I'd just like to see the implementation plans, that's, that's gonna be the fun part.
And-
Because they all come with a cost, so that'll be even more fun.
Yes, and I think, for, for example, the community facilities, ideally, I see, we're gonna get, we're gonna tackle these recommendations this year, we're gonna tackle these other recommendations in the next three years. We're gonna tackle the other ones in the next five, and then ten years, I, I'm guessing that's what the town, town manager might choose to do.
I'm hoping so, because that, this, they're based on the master plan recommendations, and that's the, so, that's the rock bottom that reached our zoning risks. So, these, it's almost got this positive force.
Right, and, and one of the conversations, I think, I think Jim would be comfortable with saying this, is just, we're having a big conversation about prioritization, because, as I'm sure many of you are aware, we have some projects this year that sure were a surprise in the priority list that are going to the voters, and I think we're starting to have a longer, a bigger conversation about having more clear priorities before the C I P process, so there aren't projects that come in at the last minute. And so the department heads have a clearer understanding of, uh, where their efforts should be focused, particularly because a lot of these projects impact many departments, and we want everybody to be working in the right direction. Uh, for something that may, like Popwell Arena, or whatever it might be, that really is gonna involve collaboration and cooperation with a bunch of parties, so. I think that we're working towards the approach at the master plans, I guess, anyway, hopefully.
Right, and, and we did, uh, and see, I did deal with some projects that were priorities. And I always felt kind of uncomfortable doing that.
Because they were off that-
Yeah, right, because they were sort of put ahead, and I think we really have to be careful about that, and maybe the C I P needs to, maybe we need to-
A little bit more tougher.
Make the, yeah.
There is a, there's gonna be an, a request for the C I P to be tougher this year, I think from town management even. Even though it's not town management's committee, and that's recognized, but people are, people, what is happening is, is certain projects are getting to certain points, and people are saying, well, the C I P committee approved this. And that is something that I think needs to be addressed. Because the C I P committee often says, this is a good start, but in order to get this project ready, you need to meet these deadlines. C I P committee doesn't, it doesn't reconvene to make sure the project's on track, that's really the goal, or the, the responsibility the budget committee board is selecting. But then you have people going on in the process and saying, well, no, this is what C I P approved, and, and everybody's comfortable with it, and that's not really the case. Uh, so we need to, you're gonna be asked to be a little more conservative, I think.
People also, remember, the C, the C I P only makes recommendations based on what they hear. And they, none of the recommendations need to be listened to, and as you saw in the warrant, a lot of them weren't listened to at all.
Right, and, and I, again, I just worry when people are saying that C I P approved this, that, that's not, the C I P plan is what comes out. There are projects that make up the plan, but the C I P is not approving the living projects.
No, no, I do.
No, you know, or, and I hate to call that project out, but that's obviously one that everybody's aware of.
Right.
Or the C I P project is recommending the, the high street water line replacement. They've developed a strategy to fund it, but you weren't, you haven't said, this is a good project.
So, we, we, we did not recommend a two-point-eight million dollar living program, and we were, we never even saw a three-hundred-thousand-dollar capital reserve fund quest from the C I P.
Right.
That just sort of appeared magically out of nowhere.
And I don't think, and I know we're, we're actually gonna talk about C I P in the next meeting, but I don't think that what should be done is that projects have to go back to C I P. I think it's just, we have to be more clear about what C I P is approving and what is not approving. Because projects may change after the September deadline, and actually, they will, and how do we manage those changes? And make them clear who is responsible for indicating whether those changes are good or bad things. And I don't know the answer yet, but I think there's gonna be a huge push this year, because of the way the board's selectmen feel and town management feels, to, to really think about what C I P is recommending. So.
Okay.
Leave that right there.
One of the, um, the things on the town warrant, it has to do with, uh, the easement for Whiteface Mountain.
Yes.
And one of the recommendations in the master plan from National Resources Committee was to have all the, um, town properties put into a similar easement. And how do you go about that process? I mean, if, if the Whiteface one says that these would have to go before the voter, um, but how do you get that process eliminated, or started? Is it through the select board, is it through the conservation commission, is it through the, what source?
The Whiteface easement has to go to the voters, because the easement is, because it's a Lake Region Conservation Trust easement, and it's partially municipally owned land, it's a very strange situation. So, I, I, I wanna confirm this, but I'm, I'm almost certain that it would not take much for the conservation to, commission to amend its own existing easements, provided the board of selectmen consent to it as part of that process. I, I'm sure every property is different, based on what the property owner has requested, but I, I, all I would say for sure is that Whiteface is unique, that is not normally the process. Uh, for example, the, the easement on the Pleasant Valley Bridge was not approved through the voters. That was an easement that was approved independently through the board of selectmen and conservation commission. I, if I had to sort of charge the concom of one thing, and I, I probably should do this to their, you know, at their meeting. I, I think they really need to come up with a, a kind of a conservation action plan on what their priorities are, including both amendments to existing easements and other parcels that they want to look after. Because right now, I, I'm not clear on exactly what the strategy is, and I think that they should be using their N R I to kind of define what the priority is for what they wanna do. And I, I know that they're doing that in their own heads, and they probably do have a strategy, but I think the public should be, should be a little more aware of that, and that's one thing that I do think they're gonna work on.
Okay, so, any other, any changes?
So, we're gonna be discussing the C I P next meeting?
I was gonna recommend C I P, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, and not a huge discussion, but I wanted to discuss the idea of an additional public member, which is something that had been talked about prior, at a prior meeting, and then the school district member I do wanna talk about as well, whatever.
Public members?
We had mentioned it.
Why do you want five?
I'm not saying I want.
Why are you proposing?
I'm not proposing, it was discussed at a prior meeting. I'm, I'm happy to not take the, take it up, I think it is too much.
I think it's-
Yeah, I do, I actually, I was, I was a committee-
No, I'm sorry, I'm incorrect. It's an additional elected member, because we had the concern, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. We had the issue where we had a-
That was Tim Cronin.
A public member that was on and was technically an elected official in the town.
Subsequent to his appointment to C I P.
Right, but that wasn't actually an issue, in my opinion, because he was appointed to the C B A, not elected.
But now he has-
He has not been elected to the C B A. But, but, but I think your concern is, is a good one, in that what if we have that issue down the road? Should we have the ability to say a maximum of three elected members may sit on the, but then you have plenty more members.
Three non-planning board elected members.
Right.
You're gonna rewrite this, the-
Yeah, I've gotta think about it, but, yeah, so that's, I'm sorry, it wasn't a public member, it was a, it was the elected issue that ran into at the school district, so, yeah, it'll come back.
Okay, but as far as, uh, this, any other corrections, or can we just sort of go ahead with this as a plan?
I know it's simple, but it's-
Yeah, I'm, well, I'm talking about this.
Yeah, no, it's, it's simple, but it's, I mean-
Changes, okay.
With the changes today.
Yeah, right, okay.
Where things are going.
All right, great. Uh, the next item, joint planning board E D C member, I did not put this on the agenda.
Good, 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 good. Whose idea was this? That's what I don't love the E D C idea.
Susan, why did you add this? Um, this is actually just informational, the, the, uh, there's nothing really to discuss at this time. The E D C has again brought up that they wanna talk about having a joint meeting with the planning board. There's no topic discussion yet, they're having a meeting next week, I think it's gonna be one of their agenda items.
Good, that was some-
Yeah, I just wanted to let you know that they are again bringing up that they wanna have a joint meeting, or at least one or two members are bringing up, and have requested that the E D C talk about it, I don't know what they wanna talk about.
Did you relay the message last time that we would have liked, uh, the topics of discussion before?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you, John.
And, and I'll be honest with everyone at home, they, I, I am being sort of ping pong between the two groups with, they want me to ask you what you wanna talk about, and you want to ask them what they wanna talk about. So, I'm not sure me is necessary, quite frankly.
Well, it's, it's quite simple, what the planning board, if they're asking us, uh, we now have a chapter called Economic Development, and, and that, I mean, basically, during all the meetings for that, we've talked about, this would be the E D C committee doing it, so, that's what we would like them to do.
I think what might be product, more productive is the item on here where we deliver the chapter to them and have a conversation rather than a joint meeting. I don't think the joint meeting, unless we have a specific matter to discuss, I don't think it's productive.
Well, we don't have a specific matter to discuss, at least as far as I'm concerned, but apparently, they, they feel that there's something at the fault.
Some members may, some members may, let's listen to what they say.
I see no reason not to invite them in, have them sit down and listen to what they have to say. We'll learn something.
Now, this is like a bad marriage, you look at your spouse or your significant other, and you wonder what they're thinking, and then they make you go around in circles to wonder what they're thinking. I mean, I'm not gonna go through that, give us what you're thinking, and we can rationally think about it.
Well, you'll never know what they're thinking unless you talk, unless you hear them first, so.
Right.
Let's have them come in the room, and, you know, tell us what's on their minds, and take it from there. Communication is always good, always good.
And you don't ever wanna be accused of not communicating.
Correct.
Uh, okay.
This is relationship advice to them today, everybody.
Forty-eight years.
That's right.
You learn a few.
There, there was one item, and, and I know the work program is next, but, uh, Paul O'Brien was appointed to the short-term rental committee after our last meeting, do we do?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
It's a subcommittee of ours.
No, you're, you're right, you're right, I, but yeah, I should have, I should have mentioned that.
So, anyway, uh, board of selectmen has asked for Paul O'Brien, and he has agreed to be on the short-term rental committee, so I'll make a motion to prove Paul as a member. Okay, motion has been made in seconded, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed.
Worthy addition to the subcommittee.
Yes, okay, all right, none of the-
Paul will be a good member.
Paul's gonna be a good member.
He's gonna be a good member.
Paul is sharp, and he's on the ball.
Uh, okay, okay, the twenty twenty work program, yeah, an update?
I, yeah, I mean, I just added in the comments that we had our last meeting, that was all I did, it, there's no other modification beyond that. Uh, we will, I'm gonna take off the things that are gonna be voted on this, this spring, obviously, or just March. Uh, and then I'm gonna be bringing back a few of these to your next meeting on the eighteenth. Uh, and then we'll start cracking on a few of the more detailed ones, such as the impact basis, the revised road standards, and the parking ordinance. But right now, the focus, quite frankly, is on the short-term rental committee, wanna get that started.
Right.
Uh, so, spending some time on that for right now.
And, and the, actually, the parking regs, we had decided earlier that you and Mike and I would sit down and come back.
Try and put something together.
Yeah, try and put something together, come back to you.
Couple of comments on the work program editorial. Um, on the task, second one, master plan implementation committee establishment.
That's been done.
That has been done, you're correct, thank you.
Uh, continuing on down towards drive-through restaurants ordinance review.
Yep.
Um, schedule for spring twenty twenty, requested, contacted, I don't know what that means.
Yep, sorry, that is, uh, I will remove that, because that's not relevant.
All right, then down further, review of impervious coverage limitations.
Yes.
In its status, further review needed in twenty twenty.
Thank you, Mike.
I appreciate what you write, you know?
I have, no, I appreciate it.
Uh, further down, complete comprehensive review of parking standards slash ordinance. Um, delete to be reviewed follow completion of master plan, that's been done. Spring of twenty twenty is the project, the next one, next tour creation of continuing care, uh, to be reviewed following completion and review of future land use chapter should also be deleted, no? Since we've done future land use chapter, and that'll go for the Pine Hill Road filter beds planning study also.
Yep.
Delete that sentence.
Yep.
That would bring the listing up to date.
Okay.
In my opinion.
Thank you, done. Anything missing on here? Okay. We look at this, we look at this four to five times.
We had a water-
We added that in.
Yep.
I added that in, it's, uh-
No, we, we're, I asked you to put it on the next one.
Which item?
Stormwater management recommendation review.
Stormwater for the special use.
Yes, and I did-
We're gonna talk about that.
I did, I, I, I put in different terms on here, but it's review of foundation, I'm sorry, uh, review of special use permit requirements for foundation, permit for drains, that's really kind of intended to be a larger stormwater management consideration.
When are we tentative on that one?
I was thinking about talking about it at the next meeting, at least generally, I haven't written anything, but just to get a better sense of what exactly you want, we're gonna be written for it.
Yeah, no, I was hoping to come in and talk with you about that.
Oh, okay, that's fine, yeah, that's good, uh, just, just so folks know, we, we are pretty light on that agenda, assuming that there isn't a huge public comment period for the architectural standards, which I'm, I'm knocking wood for that, because I don't know. But, um, if you have something you really wanna discuss, I am looking at, uh, C I P, which should be a rediscussion, the stormwater issue- if you have something you really want to discuss, I am looking at CIP, which should be a brief discussion, the stormwater issue for special use permitting. And I believe that's it for the meeting, so it's a very light agenda. You did, but some of those, like the impact fee ordinance are not quite ready for progress.
That was what the.
CBA allowances?
Yes, I can bring that back.
Yeah, okay, that's.
I can bring that back, yeah.
So anyone thinks of anything else?
And hopefully I can get a letter drafted for the DOT thing as well. So I can have that for you.
Okay, and I, I'm beginning to worry about the wayfinding sign and the implementation of it, but that really isn't up to me to worry about, that's up to you.
Let me share, let me take that burden for you, because I, I'm worried about it too, but.
Oh, okay, well, of course, it hasn't passed yet, but I tend to worry about these things.
I have had conversations with people about when it does.
Yeah.
And I've also informed them that when it does, we're going to need a bit of time to talk about it and we're probably going to need to go see locations. And one last thing on that, I will make a general comment that there was definitely misinformation being spread about the ordinance that I was told about prior to that public hearing. So.
Yes, there was.
I have heard a specific comment from somebody that was totally not true about whether new signs would be permitted. And that, that, I don't know how that got out there, but it sounded intentional, so, and it was a telephone game. No, I don't, I, I don't want to, yeah, I, I think there was intentionally misinformation spread, but.
And, and Roger Murray mentioned that he had heard someone had talked about it before.
It, it could have been confusion, honestly, but what I, what I'll just tell you, I heard, that's that no new signs were going to be permitted.
Yeah, right.
And that, that was definitely not the case, and when I told the person that, they were much different than they were in the hearing, I'll leave it at that, and you'll figure out who it was, but it was.
At the same time, there was a statement that until the hearing was held and until we did stuff, there weren't committing permitted signs.
The, the, we haven't permitted them.
Because we haven't permitted, so therefore it was like, okay, so therefore they may have interpreted that way, so, right, anyway, it's irrelevant.
It's been clarified.
But we're, we're working, when people come in, to tell them what the actual rules are going to be, that the rules are still going to be a little challenging, but that this is a kind of a first try, and people have been generally pretty good about understanding that, so.
Okay.
And don't shop when you're stored up before you come in to see Matt about the wayfinding sign.
Why? Suck that thing up. It's rocking the whole. I don't think, I don't think any of the folks are going to be too, there are a couple that I think are, may come in businesses, but the, the one I'm going to fight, just so you know, I'm not going to permit a sign at that, that Citizens Bank intersection, I refuse to do that, just so you know. So, it's not going to happen.
Well, the committee looked at that also.
No, I know, but if somebody were to argue, I, I kind of made, I, I said that at one hearing, I don't know if you remember that, I said, there's no way I'm going to do it, I'm not going to do it, and we'll have an appeal, that's fine. I think that's so dangerous there, and I think there will be others like that.
Right.
Dangerous, so.
Well, we did come up with an alternate.
Yeah.
Another location.
That's right.
Okay, minutes of January 21st.
My only comment was that I kept saying the same thing over and over.
Can't address that with a number. Other than that, it seemed fine to me.
Anybody have any corrections?
Up for me?
Okay, so one want to make a motion to approve the January 21st minutes? Thank you, motion has been made and seconded by someone?
Second.
And all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I approve, all right, great.
One, you business?
Yes.
The short-term rental bill that's now in, in the Senate, SB 458, which is Senator Bradley's bill, that is going to a public hearing tomorrow in the Senate. The short-term rental subcommittee of the planning board should be up on the status of that bill, should be following it. The somehow, planning board, the short-term rental subcommittee or the Board of Select persons should make their feelings known to that committee. As many other towns in the state have done already. Not necessarily in opposition, but if you remember the bill, it prohibits any municipal regulation of short-term rentals, period. The assumption is that there is a problem with overregulation, which either needs to be stopped before it gets started or stopped dead in its tracks now. Our town, which is the senator's hometown, is unaware of whether there's a problem or not. Is starting a committee to look into that, and I think the Senate Subcommittee should be aware of the fact that Wolfboro, which is a prime location for short-term rentals, is unaware whether there is a problem or isn't, and would rather than being stopped by a state preemptive regulation with application statewide, from thinking about and being able to pass regulations where they might be necessary for the locality, would like to be given the time to consider whether or not there is, in other words, an argument for locality, local rule, as opposed to a statewide prohibition on any regulation of short-term rentals. Conway, Jackson, Milford, Hanover, Portsmouth, Laconia, Hampton have all lodged objections to the bill. New Hampshire Municipal Association is opposed to it, the New Hampshire Lodging and Restaurant Association is opposed to it also. The only people to speak in favor of it last week, besides Mr. Bradley, Senator Bradley, were members of the Association of New Hampshire Realtors and the trade association that represents TripAdvisor, Airbnb and Expedia. No town spoke in favor of the legislation, no individual spoke in favor of the legislation. I just think that, not to be any more long-winded than I've already been, that the short-term rental subcommittee of planning board should be at least aware of the status of that bill, because it is a, in my opinion, a mischievous bill.
One of the agenda items, I've just sent an email, I think last night to the committee, one of the agenda items I added was a, a at least just brief discussion about all of the active pieces of legislation in, in the legislature.
There is, there is only one active piece of legislation, the other two have been tabled as an expedient or they're, they're dead in committee, this is the only one that's live.
And I think we would probably still talk, just talk about these, sorry, the ITL ones, but yes, we, we do plan to at least share that information because I think it is important. The only, the only final note I'd make on that, or the only note I'd make is that those municipalities, with the exception of maybe of Milford, have all taken some regulatory stance on the issue of short-term rentals, whereas Wolfboro has not.
Correct.
And that's my only concern about, and I'm not saying that you're suggesting this, Mike, that's my only concern about writing or drafting some kind of memo on the matter coming from the town, just because we haven't actually chosen our perspective on the issue.
That's the whole point that we should make, Matt, we should simply say that rather than the example of Hampton and Hanover and Portsmouth that's just rushed in saying, oh my God, we've got to regulate this stuff, we simply don't know whether it needs to be regulated, and we'd like to be given the grace of time to figure that out for ourselves rather than stopped by some steamroller coming in a comfort.
Understood, that's fair.
Thank you.
So, point of interest, on that matter of short-term rentals and the rooms and meals tax that's collected in the state, is there any truth to the discussion that portions of those rooms and meals taxes should have been or are returned back to the towns?
So, my understanding is that there should be some return of room and meals tax to municipalities. I don't know whether that's happening right now, John, I don't know, not on that accounting side, but I actually did look into this a little bit and I found some fact sheets and, and I, some papers on the fact that we should be receiving room and meals tax.
From Airbnbers or from?
Generally, anything.
Generally, yeah, we should be.
It's, there's an apportionment that should be going back to the municipality, I'm not sure whether we receive it or not, we may, and I don't know. But obviously, what you're getting at is that we should, then we do want to have a good sense of whether people are actually paying their taxes or not, because we have.
It plays into the program whether or not you want to add something into a program or you want to look at the program as it stands. That's just the way I'm looking at it.
Oh, no, Airbnb bills into their rates for New Hampshire, the meals and rooms tax as part of the charge.
Right, but it's paid.
Not everybody does.
Oh, okay.
It's paid by the renter to Airbnb or however it works. And then that, that piece is automatically paid to the state, so the state gets its, its fair room and meals tax through Airbnb rentals. But not every short-term rental on the internet outfit posts its tax number and automatically collects from the fee charged.
Yeah.
So that's a problem too.
Okay, anything else, folks?
I have one more item.
Okay, all right.
I know we discussed the ma, master plan implementation, but there was one item that's come up and I was just wanting to ask Matt and the board. We did make a lot of progress on the facilities director.
Right.
And I was wondering if we're going to revisit that, it did make it out of our committee. And I desperately think that we should relook at the facilities manager and how we're going to take care of all our new buildings and how we're going to be able to help these people take care of their buildings that don't have the abilities to take care of their building, because they're too busy taking care of the part of the building servicing the people.
So, did, remind, did the, was that a specific recommendation from the chat?
I was trying to remember. I think it was assigned to the town manager.
I think that's going to be one that we have to really be clear on with the town manager. I, you know, I, I always say I can't speak for Jim, but as everyone knows, the recent events at Town Hall have been a huge example of why we need to change our thinking about building maintenance, so I think he's keenly aware of it. I hope some progress is made, but that is going to be the town manager and selectmen that really need to, to feel that before they take action, because and I think it's obvi, honestly, I think it's a little bit relying upon us as department heads and those who are potentially doing that job to make the case why our time is better served doing the things we're actually hired to do, rather than taking care of buildings, and I'm not sure we've done a good enough job of doing that. And documenting how our time is being spent managing our facilities, so I think it's going to be town manager, Board of Selectmen, department heads, they have to, have to get.
It didn't get into community facilities, but was it in another chapter?
No, we, it wasn't, it wasn't. It didn't make it out of our subcommittee.
Right.
The one that we had.
Community facilities?
It, it, it was removed from, from your chapter. And I actually wasn't at the meeting, but I do know that happened.
Yeah.
The, the very specific point of adding a facilities manager, I believe, was not.
That was, that's, did not, do not remember that.
I'll have to look again.
That was one of the important parts that we wanted to keep in, I didn't think that got removed.
But I thought that if it wasn't in their chapter, I thought it was in some place, but.
I will check on that.
Yeah, okay.
I thought that was, I don't think that was removed. I do not remember that being removed, because that was an important part of our recommendation.
Okay, well, let, let us follow up on that.
But I, I agree, it's a critical issue.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I, I do too.
It's probably one of the most important issues moving forward here, I mean, tomorrow, something's going to happen because something's made break or somebody needs to fix something.
Yeah.
We've got a $5 million brand-new library, and we've got a $4 million brand-new town hall. We're, we're, we're growing too big not to have a facilities manager.
The, the, the idea that Huggins Hospital has a facilities department and the town of Wolfboro does not have a facility, a single facilities person is just, that's all I need to hear.
Unbalanced.
Yeah, it's.
Right. And, and we hear from facilities being a lot at the hospital.
I think you'd get better.
And, you know, it's very comforting, at least you know things are being dealt with. Okay, okay, so we're going to follow up on that. Anything else, folks?
No, thank you.
Okay, then, we're adjourned. And the motion having been made.
I'm second.
Okay, and my watch has been going off like crazy.